For hundreds of years, we brought you the news. Written the info, we gave you the clues. Owners profits were always sky high. Change in market now threatens our lives. Post litteration, critical reading, dumbed down.
Hello, hello. My name is Eugene Driscoll. Welcome to Naval Gazing, the Valley Indy Podcast. I'm recording this at 8:00 PM Wednesday, April 8th. So the subject today is very simple. Last night, Tuesday, April 7th, the city of Ansonia held a virtual town hall meeting to talk about the city's response to the COVID-19 pandemic. It's 54 minutes long. It is very much worth your time to listen to. So you can also skip around if you choose, but there's a lot of good information that came out during this virtual meeting was held, virtual online meeting, whatever you want to call it. It was held via Zoom and I think at one point there were at least 50 participants. So just hats off to the city of Ansonia for hosting a meeting like this. Not only was it the police chief and Arms, Ryan Hunt from Arms and the Fire Marshal, Chief Eamon from the Fire Department presenting information. They also took questions directly from the audience. So, and there are a lot of good questions asked. I mean, some of the things that jumped out at me during this meeting was first Chief Cota of the Police Department indicated that a few officers, it wasn't clear how many might have been exposed to COVID-19. The details of how that came about wasn't clear. So they're monitoring a few Ansonia police officers. A member of the public asked a question about the ice cream truck. If you follow Facebook, that's been all over all the towns pages. What, yes, no with the ice cream truck? So a lot of, just a lot of good questions and good answers. So without further ado, I will shut up. Here is, now I, this is the audio from it. This was a video thing online, but I taped the audio. So the very beginning's cut off, just so you know, but the first speaker that you'll hear is Ansonia Police Chief Andrew Cota, and then the rest of the speakers are introduced. So, thank you.
I've been asked to speak on behalf of the city, at least for the Police Department aspect. I would like to give everyone an update of what the Police Department functions and their capabilities are right now and our decisions in issues that we've been dealing with throughout the city. Currently, the Police Department is fully functional. We are able to provide all the police services as far as calls for service, officers on patrol or respond to huge calls and emergencies throughout the city. We have been dealing with some staffing issues regarding this COVID virus and the potential exposure to some of our officers. So we work through that on a daily basis, but we still have a full complement of police officers to put on the street on a daily basis at this point. For the public, as you well know, you've seen in the news, our officers are showing up in, we'll be showing up in gloves, sometimes masks. We're using social distancing measures in every way possible, both motor vehicle stops, walk-up complaints or any of the sort. So we will continue to do that for both our safety and the public safety to hopefully prevent anyone from getting ill as a result of a public interaction. So they will be using personal protective equipment to arrive on scenes. We are asking all the citizens and people who are involved that need police services to do their best to come outside to meet the officers. Again, this is for everyone's safety. There are circumstances where we cannot do that. We will have to enter a residence, but we are trying to get people to come out, speak to them for both their comfort and our officers' level of comfort, but we will respond to any and all calls for service. We have suspended a few in-person transactions in the city, such as coming into the records department, parking tickets, fingerprinting, elective fingerprinting outside of an arrest. We continue, we can provide some services online. We can get you your reports online. If you call, our records division is, is open. So if you do need assistance for that, we can provide that to you or get you a copy of an accident report or any incident report you may require. The Police Department, Fire Department and our Ansonia Rescue Medical Services have all been working very closely together. We've learned a great deal about each other's capabilities in the past few weeks. We are working every level to limit exposures for our public and our personnel within the city at all times. We communicate daily with the state of Connecticut and the Region 2 Emergency Management Group to get updated and provide updates to the state to let them know exactly what our readiness is if, if we need to respond to a particular type of incident. We review every day if there are new and updated executive orders. We review them, we work to uphold them, and if we have questions, we have state resources that we can get follow-up on to help us interpret some of these executive orders. City personnel meet weekly. We do a Zoom meeting like we're doing tonight to go through any potential issues, keep one another updated of what's going on within the city. Again, your emergency services are the ones, they're, they're still fully, fully staffed and responding. Other offices, I will let them speak to that, but we are in contact and we can deal with city issues as needed. Our city parks are closed along with our riverwalk. Unfortunately, that does upset some of our citizens in town, but we are doing our best in what's in the best interest of the city and with the mayor's guidance to make sure our citizens are as safe as possible. There are people that do not listen sometimes. We do our best to get them off the tracks and off the fields and unfortunately, I know fishing season has begun, but at this time, we feel it's the safest thing to do for the city of Ansonia. We follow, we are following some of the guidance of the state, but until further notice, please get the message out. Parks, playgrounds, fishing holes and tracks are off limits for now. You can walk in your neighborhood, just use your social distancing techniques and enjoy this fine weather that's been out there. And we also just want to remind everyone, please continue to use every, every opportunity to help a neighbor if you can and also use your social distancing skills to prevent further infection. The city is, gets updates every day from the Nuggetuck Valley Health District as of tonight at 6:00 PM. There were 41 positive cases within the city of Ansonia that we are aware of. Again, we continue to monitor that and see what's going on. Our ambulance service may be able to provide some more detail on their calls for service, but at this time, that's the status of the Police Department and our emergency response capabilities.
Thanks, Chief Cota. Can everyone hear me? So I think the audio issue is resolved. Thanks again for participating in the Zoom session tonight. Merrick Setti wanted to use this as an opportunity to connect, better connect with the residents, with the media, to get updates from essential staff, especially here tonight, emergency services, and also an opportunity for some question and answers at the end of the segment. So with that being said, I'm going to try to get Merrick Setti's audio up and see if he'd like to share some words with us. So I'm going to unmute, should be unmuting Mayor Setti. Mayor Setti, could you hear me?
Yes, I can. I can hear, can everybody hear me?
Nod your head, everyone else should be muted. Thumbs up.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Listen, I want to, I want to take a minute to talk about how imperative it is that we all continue to maintain social distancing like Chief Cota just mentioned. And please, please, when you go to the shopping closets, because there's a lot of, a lot of mingle in there, wear a face mask at all time when you're out, please. The other thing is, you know, because I closed everything down, I encourage everyone, try to do a little exercise every day, 10 or 15 minutes, you know, and make sure, very important, that you get enough sleep. If you need any help, you can call 211 for any kind of help that you may need. And of course, if you have any problem, I am at City Hall for 16 hours a day. All right, seven days a week, I'm here to answer your calls. And you know, when Arms gets on, I'd like for Arms to just please demonstrate for the people the correct way to put on a mask and how to take it off, because that can spread the germ and it's very important. I noticed today that there were people walking on the riverwalk. Chief Cota, I would ask that you please have your officers, you know, do their due diligence in making sure that nobody's on that riverwalk, walking around.
We will, we will continue to monitor that and make sure that that's adhered to.
So I see a hand from Rosemary. I'm going to try and see if we could take a question. I think that's a question from there, because I think that's what that hand is supposed to be. So we're going to try this the very first time.
Sure.
Rosemary?
Hello?
Hey, Rosemary, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes. Okay, you're on with the mayor. Do you have a question?
Actually, I was just saying I could hear him, but I do have a question. Is anything being done about people leaving their gloves on the ground in parking lots? I mean, if...
Yeah.
Thank you. No, go ahead.
No, yes, I, Public Works is out and about. I told Mike, if Mike Alessio's on, that when you see the rubber gloves or the mask, gee, try to pick them up safely and discard them. So we are trying to do that, but I also encourage people that do use the gloves to dispose of them the proper way. We're in this together.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. So going along, if anyone does have a question, try to use that little electronic, raise your hand. Don't know if you can use the thing by phone, but if you're logging in through your iPhone, your smartphone or your computer, and you go up to your name, you'll be able to see a little option to raise or lower a hand. And so that's an opportunity for some, to get to the Q and A part. I guess it's good for a game show too, but we're not going to try that tonight. So now I'm going to turn to Arms. And so I'm going to unmute Ryan Hunt and Mike Warholak. Mike, can you hear me?
I can hear you, John.
And I'm just looking for Ryan's name on the, got Ryan here. Hey, Ryan, could you hear me?
Yes, I hear you, John.
So the floor is yours for an update from Ansonia Rescue Medical.
All right, thanks, John, and good evening, everybody. My name is Ryan Hunt. I am Chief here at Ansonia Rescue Medical Services. First of all, I wanted to take the time to thank you all for joining and getting on the call and giving us the opportunity to review, you know, what we're doing here from a, from a medical perspective. So just an update from a staffing standpoint, we are fully staffed. We've had really knock on wood, no opportunities with having to quarantine a number of staff or anything like that. So we, we continue to have very well-staffed shifts right now and are prepared and ready for you. I'll talk in a little bit about some staffing contingency plans we have as well in the event that things, you know, pick up pretty drastically. I will say that the COVID-19 call frequency in town has been picking up. As Chief Cota said, we are currently at 41 confirmed cases in Ansonia. Just based on some of the lag time with testing facilities, that's probably higher and not to scare anyone, but just the reality, it probably is higher than that. I will say that we've done, every day for the past few days, we've been increasing the number of calls, whether confirmed or suspected calls that we've been going on. So the calls have been increasing from a, from a virus standpoint. From an infection control perspective, that is our primary focus. So obviously, being a smaller department, as is the Police Department and our Public Works and Fire Departments as well, we obviously want to focus on making sure that our teams stay healthy. Without a healthy team, we can't respond to calls, right? So our, our primary function here at Arms, aside from obviously taking care of you and the community, is to make sure that our team is staying healthy. So we have some very stringent infection control policies in place, and I'll give you some examples. When our teams get back from a call, the ambulance gets fully decontaminated, meaning a full, we actually fog the back of our ambulance within an EPA-approved disinfectant. We wipe everything down after that. We clean our uniforms. All of our team members wear a step into a bleach solution prior to even walking into the building. We have HEPA air purifiers throughout the building. We have very strict infection control procedures within our building as well as social distancing, even between our crews while they're in the building, you know, eating, walking around, so on and so forth. So again, with that being the case from our perspective, it really helps to showcase the importance from a community perspective with how critically important it is for social distancing. And the mayor touched on that and Chief Cota touched on it. I know the riverwalk, there's some contention there as well, but I want to put it in perspective. We just received a communication today from the state, which actually gives some new information really around asymptomatic individuals. So there are a lot of individuals that they've been testing, whether they come in for a variety of reasons, a traumatic injury, a psychological type of issue who may get tested, and they're finding that these individuals are positive for COVID-19 as well. So with that being said, you may be walking along and think somebody is absolutely healthy based on the way they're presenting to you, and they can be carrying the virus. So it's why it's so important that we practice social distancing and made the decision to postpone, or I should say, shut down temporarily the riverwalk to prevent that type of thing from happening. All of you and your families are in close quarters in your houses, and if one of you gets that infection, it can obviously quickly spread to the other members of your family, which you're trying to avoid. Same thing at Arms, we're essentially a household here. We're all living together, we're all in the same building together, so it's so important that we stay healthy, that we can come out and be there for you. The Connecticut Department of Public Health has really predicted at this point from New Haven County, the peak of hospitalizations to be around the first week of May. So that doesn't mean the peak necessarily of viral outbreak. That means where they expect the majority of the hospitals to be full or at capacity or the majority of patients in the hospital would be around the first week of May. So we're going to start to see the increase in calls between now and probably the next couple of weeks, and then hopefully start to come down the other side of that bell curve and get. But like I said, we've been seeing an increase in calls over the last few days. I do anticipate it will continue for at least the next several days, if not a couple of weeks. Like I spoke about earlier, we do have a contingency plan for staffing. We are fully staffed right now, two ambulances until midnight every day, and then we go to one ambulance on the overnight hours. We are fully prepared with our staff and with communication and coordination with City Hall, that if we need to add another ambulance based on call volume throughout the day, so that would be a third ambulance during the day and a second ambulance on the overnight, we are absolutely prepared to do that. So rest assured that we have the staff, we have the equipment, we have the capability to add ambulances additionally as needed. And rest assured, we have partnered with our surrounding towns, Derby, Seymour, Shelton, and come to an agreement where we are supporting each other in the event we need to even add additional resources and mutual aid, obviously depending on where this goes. PPE, so our personal protective equipment, I want to briefly talk about. It is obviously, as you've heard throughout the nation, so critically important that we have in our utilizing the proper PPE. For us, on a scene where we suspect someone has the virus or it's confirmed that someone may have the virus, we, it looks a little scary. So you may have seen some of you us going to your neighbors' houses, wearing a full Tyvek suit, goggles, mask, gloves. It looks pretty frightening, it can be very intimidating, but rest assured, it's, it's to my point earlier, it's about protecting our team and protecting you to make sure that we are really gearing up as diligently as possible. We want to make sure that our teams stay healthy and that we can transport these patients in the most safe manner possible. So we will, if the ambulance gets called to your house, you may notice that it takes some time for us to get fully geared up before we come in and start to have that patient interaction. I would imagine that would be frustrating for me if I were to call an ambulance and my loved one was having a difficult time. Why are they taking so long to come into my house to get to the door? Rest assured, it's because we are making sure we're taking every possible step to be safe. There's a phrase out there, there's no emergency in a pandemic. You have to take things slow, deliberate, safe, and make sure the proper PPE is being utilized to protect everyone and most importantly, to prevent the spread. And that's really the point of us wearing masks like the mayor set out in public at this point and being very safe from that standpoint. So just keep in mind that we will be gearing up in a, in a really extreme fashion. Mayor, as far as you mentioned with, with demonstrating a mask, we are going, Channel 8 News is actually going to be here at Arms on Thursday, and they're going to be doing an entire segment on proper PPE, how we as EMS responders apply personal protective equipment, what it looks like, why we do it, how to put it on, how to take it off appropriately. The one thing I'll give you right now is when you put on and take off a mask, you don't want to be touching the front of the mask. Use the ear loops to remove it from your face so you're not touching where any contaminants may have entered, or if it's an N95 and it goes behind your head, use the strings to remove it away from your face as opposed to grabbing the front of the mask and taking it off. More to come Thursday with Channel 8 here, and we'll be able to step by step show you how we do that. I talked about social distancing. Really, the last things that I have are thanking everyone for their continuous support. The community has been absolutely outstanding from the well wishes when we're on the street, the constant donations that we've been receiving, just tremendous. The partnerships with the Police Department, the Fire Department, the town have never, in my opinion, been stronger, and everyone is working so well together. So thank you to all of the departments, the community, really tremendous. Understand that we will get through this together, I promise you. Take comfort in knowing that we are here for you, no matter what. Our team will be here and responding for the community, rest assured. Stay safe and God bless. And I'll turn it back over to you, John.
Okay, thanks very much, Ryan, and of course, Mike and all of Arms. Very appreciate it. Very nice update and definitely, you know, helping to keep Ansonia safe. Are there any questions out there for Arms, for Ryan or Mike? And I can try, you could raise your, your digital hand if you have a question. You could use the chat option as well to put a question out there in the chat. And of course, if you think of something as we go along, at the end, I'm going to try to unmute everyone to see if we can get some questions out there without disrupting the flow of the meeting. So if you do have a question and you can't get through with the digital hand raising, just wait till the end. Now I'm going to turn it over to our Fire Department and also our Fire Marshal. So I'm going to unmute Mike Eamon, who's on the line, as well as Fire Marshal Derek Lundin. Hey, Mike, can you hear me?
I can hear you now. Yep. Can you hear me?
Hey, I'm looking for, I could hear you, and I found Derek. Hey, Derek?
Yes. How you doing?
Hey, guys. So I'll turn the floor over to you for an update from what's going on at the Fire Department generally, and if there's anything to share from Fire Marshal's perspective, that as well.
Very good, John. Thank you. I'd like to reiterate a lot of what Ryan had already said, but it's, it's needs repeating. So I want to thank everybody for being here and taking the time tonight to at least listen to what we're going through as a collective group, that's for sure. Regarding the Fire Department, we are fully functional. We have changed a lot of our protocols and procedures, most of which the average person is not going to necessarily see it. A lot of it's come to decontamination before and after our calls. Probably the biggest thing that the department is going to show when you, when you're going to see from us anyways, is our gear, our PPE. Once again, as Ryan alluded to, it's going to be a little time before we get to you. We're going to do the best we can, we're as quick as we can, but we're going to be in full protective gear. And to hopefully save as much of the medical gear for Arms and for the PD, we're going to be basically coming, showing most of the time, not masks, not the N95 mask, but our full air tanks, our SCBA's, our self-contained. So we're going to be walking up to you with the full mask and the full tank on the back. That's not, that's to protect you and us. That being said, we're asking that the individual people can do a lot for us to help us in, in matters of calls, service calls. If you get a call, when you go to the dispatcher, they're going to be asking you a number of questions. If you could ask, answer as many of those as truthfully as you can and is, with as much detail as you possibly can, that'll help us. They're going to relay that information to us when we're arriving on scene. Also, please, when we get on scene, don't rush the apparatus. We know you're in need, we're coming to you. Give us the opportunity to get geared up properly so we can come to you. We will approach you, we'll keep a safe distance from you. Few questions, you may end up getting asked the same questions that we, that you asked, were asked during dispatch. We're just trying to get through this and make sure everything is working well. If you can make sure you evacuate and be outside, all the people that are, that are in the house, if that's, if that's able to be done, along with if you have a dog, especially if you have a dog, if that could be outside, because a lot of times we find that we have to walk back in or the tenant or the landlord has to go back in to get the particular animal. So if we can get that done, it saves us some time. We go, we'll do whatever we need to do to make the scene, the scene safe. We will come back to you and give you an update on that. We need very little information for you. We do not charge, so all we basically need is name, address, telephone number, and your date of birth is all the information that you need to give us. There's some small paperwork that we'll exchange, if there's a seal call or things of that nature that you'll get for all readings and everything like that. Basically, everything else is, is behind the scenes as far as our protocols and procedures. I am happy to say that currently at this point, some of the procedures I change is and protocols I change is that I have to be notified immediately if anyone is either quarantined or even have been deemed that they might be in jeopardy. I have no one to this point that's in that position. So I did last week have two, and they've since been both cleared by doctors, so we're all good with that situation. Again, I'd like to thank all the other emergency chiefs out there and the emergency services between Ansonia and Derby, Seymour. We've all been working well. Ryan, Mike and Chief Cota, we're on the phone every day, if not, if not through the phone calls, through emails every day, and I'd like to thank everybody. They have an idea, somebody sees something out there that we can get some, get some masks or some cleaning equipment or something like that, we're calling, say, you need it? I think I got a lead, this, that and the other thing. So we're all working phenomenally, is like, that's the best word I could use for it, it really is. So I want to thank everybody for their time and for the, the support also out there. So, thanks, John.
All right, thanks, Chief Eamon. And Derek, anything to share?
The office is open every day, and I've been here working on reports, answering multiple phone calls, assisting residents as needed. As far as inspections, it's going to be construction inspections for ongoing projects such as the Police Department. Anything that's a life safety complaint that's deemed immediate that I need to go out to and any fire investigations. Along the lines, I've been keeping an eye on our commercial buildings. I did find one issue today with a blocked exit. They thought they were doing the right thing by taking a doorway. Unfortunately, you can't take away an emergency, actually it has to remain operable. So we were able to get that straightened away and other than that, I've found a lot of cooperation with our businesses. They've been pretty good.
Okay, great. I think we do have a question from Leslie Neverett. Her digital hand is up, so I'm going to try to unmute her and see if we can bring her in.
Hi, good evening. Hi, can you guys hear me?
Hey, how are you?
Good, how are you guys? Thank you so much for your service. I just wanted, I did a question with regards to the PPE equipment. Like how are we in terms of like, equipped, like stored, not storage, but like, are we good? Like we're not, like we don't have a shortage? Like do we have the budgeting, like the monies, the funding to, to equip it or to, to obtain it, things like of that nature?
Okay, so I'm also going to unmute Chief Cota and also Ryan Hunt as it relates to their departments as well. And guys, feel free to chime in to answer Leslie's question about that, and certainly an important topic.
Okay. Ryan, I guess I'll start. At this time, the Police Department, as a normal course of business, we stock a decent amount of PPE for our officers, on regular, for regular business gloves. We have masks. We've had some donations for the surgical masks that can also be used for protection, goggles and isolation goggles and stuff. So at this point in time, we are in relatively good shape. Again, anything can change in a moment's notice if this continues on for an extended period of time. We have tapped into a few different resources, both at the state level and private vendors that we continue to put in orders and also get items that we've required or requested in. We've worked through our own budgets and in conjunction with the city to make sure that there is funding available for any needs. So at this time, I'll speak for the Police Department. We are in, in okay shape and we continue to search for, for equipment. Ryan, I'll turn it over to you. I know you have a little different situation than we do as far as the amount that you require.
Sure, thanks, Chief. And Leslie, first off, thank you for the question, and I think that, you know, it speaks to your concern for our departments on what we have and are we adequate, adequately equipped. to your concern for our departments on what we have and are we adequate, adequately equipped. The first, the first thing I'll say is from a budgetary standpoint, we have the funds in our budget to purchase equipment as we need it. The problem is, there is very little equipment to be purchased because there's so many vendors that are out of stock. So, right now, it's very difficult to find N95 masks, lots of disinfectant sanitizers, Tyvek suits and gowns are very difficult to source at this point. With that being said, we are in pretty good shape from a in-stock perspective. We have a mass casualty trailer that we always have on hand. If you remember, we had a Rock the Summer event that we expected 10,000 people to show up at, so we had a lot of equipment from that in storage, things like Tyvek suits, masks. So, we're in pretty good shape from that standpoint. With that being said, we don't know where this is going to go. We don't know how busy we're going to get. This is all new to all of us, right? But with what we have and what we think we're going to predict as far as call volume goes, I feel pretty comfortable with what we have. We have also received donations. So, there's been a company called Thermax Jackets in West Haven. They've converted their facility to making Tyvek gowns. They've donated several gowns to us, that's outstanding. The Home Depot has donated actual masks, cleaning supplies, rolls of Tyvek, then taken those rolls, giving them to the vendor and the vendors, then using those to make more gowns for us. So, we're getting creative when it comes to some of these things. In addition to that, pinpoint promotions in West Haven. A promotion company also changed their assembly line to make face shields. They donated a bunch of those to us. There's a number, I'm forgetting all of the amazing people out there that have donated, not to mention the citizens of the community that have donated homemade masks and things like that. So, long answer to a short question, but I think overall, we're doing fairly well with the number of supplies that we currently have and we're constantly monitoring that.
So, thanks. We have, we do have some other questions coming up in the chat and I'm going to try to get to them in the order that they're received. One concern that came up, and it's sort of a common one, we've gotten a lot of calls over the last two weeks with respect to what businesses should be operating and how should they be safely operating. And one question raised was the operation of an ice cream truck in the neighborhood. And so, again, I could turn over to you guys, Chief Coda, I think it's probably most appropriate, concern about social distancing and, you know, where the line should be in terms of, you know, food trucks are popular and I do see on Facebook, many do seem to be operating in different towns. You know, where should the line be drawn and maybe when should a resident give a call to the police, you know, if they're concerned?
Well, to answer the last question first, anytime they have a concern, always feel free to call the department. We can check into it and take a look to ascertain the facts and see if there is a violation. As far as the actual ice cream truck moving around, at this time, I don't have a firm answer. It is, falls under the line of a delivery type service. So, we would have to get a better ruling from the state if that's considered that. But at this point, we've, we've been told that they fall under the delivery type services. Again, if there's 10 or 12 or 13 people standing out in front of the truck to get ice cream, I think that's something we're going to have to take a look at. But there would have to be some research and actually a ruling for us from the state to determine if, if there are, one, health concerns, two, is there a violation of an executive order? It's not very specific in the executive orders. It speaks to places that serve food and their ability to either deliver or do pickup. So, it's kind of a gray area, it's a little bit of both, but it's something we can, I can check on, I can reach out to our state reps and see if there is a firm answer to that. But at this, at this time, if somebody does see something where there's a large group around this truck, they should be calling us so we can go take a look at it.
And obviously, I think it goes without saying, it's been in the news quite a bit. You know, a lot of local businesses are having a very difficult time coping with, with the crisis. And a lot of residents have been great, the patronage as much as possible in a restricted form of our businesses on Main Street and elsewhere in Ansonia, but obviously, it hurts. We've published a list of resources for our local business owners to avail themselves of, aid from the state, aid from the federal government, and our economic development directors on the line. I wanted you to know that we're going to be, our next town hall will be geared towards those business issues and we're looking to get our local business owners together to help facilitate the connection between them and those providers of the state and federal aid and see if we can get them some help. The Paycheck Protection Act is one in particular, one application in particular, that's providing some relief to businesses struggling at this time. Another question that's come through, of the confirmed cases of COVID in Ansonia, how many are in the hospital and how many are in need of intensive care? So, basically, a deeper dive into those numbers is being asked for.
I'll take that. So, we don't have that information. We just know, this is the DPH published information that goes to the Nogatuck Valley Health Department and the Nogatuck Valley Health Department, you know, shares that back and forth with the state. So, we don't know their condition. From an Arms perspective, we don't even know where those residents are located unless we get dispatched to that address, they will tell us in our, in our computer system. So, we don't know, you know, the condition, where they are. Lots of people are recovering at home, so keep that in mind, that if you're not having severe distress, a lot of people are recovering at home. I think New York today, for the first time, had more people discharged from the hospital than brought into the hospital. So, we're seeing some positive things coming and I like to think that that's a lot of the case here in Ansonia as well.
So, this is a question, is there any policy or procedure in place to check on COVID-positive individuals who may be living alone without any help or assistance to make sure that they are not in need of further help?
Yeah, again, we don't know, we don't have the addresses of everybody in town that have it. It's really a need to know from a HIPAA perspective and we don't need to know unless we're being dispatched to that location. I will say that the Nogatuck Valley Health Department is following up with those individuals continuously that are determined to have the virus. So, rest assured, knowing that they are very on top of who these people are and are following up with them appropriately.
Great. And also, I could share some information in terms of, it doesn't relate to COVID-positive people specifically, but in terms of our senior population, the Ansonia Housing Authority and our senior center have shared lists of residents. The mayor's made some calls to check in and our housing authority was making some wellness calls. So, while it doesn't relate to individuals that we know have COVID, we know that seniors are a vulnerable population and so that we're trying to make efforts to be in contact with them to make sure they know, you know, there is someone to contact out there. I want to go to Marissa Toth, who has a question and I believe she's on the line, and see if I can find her to unmute her. Hey, Marissa?
Hi, everyone, how are you?
Thanks for being with us.
Thank you all for your service, I really appreciate it. I did post my question in the chat, but it was later on. But I do have two questions. First is, I do have two young children, one is eight and the other one is two. And I was wondering, I know you guys sometimes put out videos or pictures of what like you could look like in PPE or something that we can show our children. So, should a fire arise or something, they know that you're not a scary person or I just, if an emergency arises, they're not scared with your PPE on? I just was wondering if that might be a possibility for you guys to do something like that.
Yeah, from Marissa, thanks for the question. And from an Arms perspective, I don't know if you follow our Facebook page, but we are out there, Ansonia Rescue Medical Services, I would encourage you to do that. And what I will do is I will post after we get off this call, a couple of pictures from the field of our individuals, what they look like. And like I said again, on Thursday night, we will run in a story on, we put it on, so that can be helpful too. But tonight, I'll post a couple of pictures, you can see kind of what it looks like.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Marissa?
It does, but I just have one more question, is that okay? So, I also heard via social media that Target did have a positive, COVID-positive employee and I wasn't sure, is there anything out there that they're supposed to be releasing that information? Because I do do a lot of like Target drive up and it just made me a little concerned. I wish that I would have been told by the company rather than finding out on social media.
Melissa, I'll try to answer that. As far as our end, the information that the city or ambulance, police or fire, it falls under HIPAA, we are allowed to get some information because we're first responders. As far as what a private company or a private enterprise would do, I'm sure they're being advised by their legal people whether or not they can release that information. I'm sure they're not going to release a name or an address or anything of the sort. I have seen some, some department stores and even shopping, shopping stores such as ShopRite, they've, they posted some things if they have information they'd like their customers to know. I am unaware of a statewide nor a current policy that requires them to make a public notification. Ryan, I'm not sure if you're aware of anything, but correct me if I'm wrong on that end.
I don't know anything specifically about Target. I will tell you that we do monitor very closely the Retail Association of America around specifically what different retailers are doing. A lot of retailers, if they do have a positive case involving one of their employees, they'll go through and do a deep clean in their stores. I can't speak specifically for Target if they're doing that or what they've done, but the consensus generally among retailers is if they've identified an employee in their location, they will take action on their end to make sure their stores are being cleaned appropriately.
Okay, great. We have a question from our Valley Independent Sentinel. The question pertains to COVID-19 cases at the police department. Do we know if there are any officers that tested positive? Do we know how many, if so?
John, what I can, what I can do is answer is, at this point, the, the people that, that are out are ones that could possibly have been exposed, we were not sure. So, we're following CDC guidelines of, of having them out for the recommended amount of time to make sure they don't exhibit any symptoms without prying into personal medical records. We, we had two officers that have been tested, we are waiting on results for that, but we do have, we follow very closely, Griffin Hospital is our medical vendor for us, so we, we report, respond to them or call them and ask them what the status is or how we should handle a particular case. So, at this point, we have, I have two, two officers, I'm sorry, three total that are just waiting to make sure that they're, get through their timeline and can be released back to work. That's where we stand to this point. I cannot provide you any names or information other than if we've been notified of a possible exposure, that's how we've handled it in accordance with CDC and Griffin Hospital guidelines.
Okay, great. Thank you, Chief. Leslie Navarrette, I believe, has a question. Hey, Leslie?
Oh, no, no, that was, I think, from last time. I'm all set.
Or someone will lower your hand. All right, thank you. Okay, do we have any other questions out there? And thank you, everybody, for participating. We have 48 people on the call.
I do have a question. What just happened?
John, if I could? John? We froze.
Go ahead, Chief.
Oh, I'm sorry. I believe Leslie was the one that asked also about, to Ryan, about the websites. All the fire departments in Ansonia, I believe almost every single one has a, their own website as well as their Facebook page. They all have, I know you can get plenty of pictures that'll show inaction when we're drilling and stuff like that. And I know, as a matter of fact, there was just something recently, we put together for the press release when we had the new air packs. So, that shows definitely three or four different views of the, the firemen in there with their full air packs on, so it'll give her a good basis of the child to be able to see exactly what they'd be look like. So, I just wanted to give that out.
Great. Can't hear anybody except for you, Chief.
I think we've lost John.
Yeah, we've lost some.
We had some technical difficulty. Can you hear me again?
Yeah.
No idea, no idea. Trial and error. Okay, so we're back on. Any other questions?
There's some in the chat. There's some questions on the chat. Let's see. Maybe?
A question with respect to federal funding, what is the status on that for Ansonia? So, in terms of aid coming from either the state or the federal government, aid to the city, do we have an understanding of, you know, is it on the way, have we received it?
So, are we talking about in terms of businesses or in terms of the municipality getting reimbursed?
I would say, you know, from A to Z, you know, in terms of any aid that we're receiving from the outside.
So, there's a lot of, there's, there are a lot of programs and there's going to be a lot of federal aid coming into the city. The reimbursement to the taxpayers for what the city spends on this pandemic is going to be about 75%. So, we are all, all departments are keeping track of what they're spending on this, any, any expenses that are related to the pandemic will be, will be reimbursed. And that's a kind of a complicated process, but we anticipate that we will get approximately 75% of our costs reimbursed for businesses who are either looking for funding or who are in the process of applying for funding. That, those applications are being processed both on the state and the federal level. And so, hopefully, they'll turn them around very quickly. And I guess yesterday, we were with Eugene on the Valley Indy, talking about some of those programs and we've posted some information about that. If anyone has any questions, please feel free to email me or call me if you're a business looking for help or, you know, anything that's available to help with supplement some of the income that you may have lost, please feel free to get in touch with me.
So, as I said before, we are looking to schedule a second virtual town hall around business, business assistance in our local businesses. I can say in terms of city expenses, I've circulated a memo last week to all departments, if there are any additional expenses related to COVID, really from top to bottom, whether it be overtime hours, whether it be costs and expenses in a transition to a work-from-home environment, we're trying to document it all so that when the reimbursement and the relief programs come out, we're well situated to show the state or federal government exactly what this emergency cost us. Of course, there's no 100% guarantee that everything will be reimbursed at the levels we'd like, but we're going to make that effort and we're going to be well prepared to show what it cost Ansonia. And that segues into a question that we just got about city personnel. Question was, have any city personnel been laid off? And at this time, I could report that there have been no layoffs, that city personnel has largely been transitioned to a work-from-home environment. Many of our departments are basically finding their legs at this point, trying to figure out how they can continue their service to the public. I know the Ansonia Library and the Ansonia Nature Center are rolling out virtual programs, both the videos and also some Zoom initiatives to be able to reconnect and to continue to provide the services. They were formerly provided, obviously, a bit of a limited basis, but, you know, new territory for everybody. And we've been working really hard to try to either transition to a work-from-home environment or to repurpose other employees to make sure that your city hall is working hard for you, albeit in a different capacity, in a very, in an environment that's albeit in a different capacity and in a very, in an environment that's very new, of course, to us all. But there are a lot of essential services the city provides. We're just trying to find ways to do so with the restrictions that we have with COVID-19. As we said a lot, you know, city government is based around social interactions. And you have an environment here where you can't socially interact. So we're trying to meet that core objective of government with, with that very big obstacle in the way. But no, there have been no layoffs. Our staff is transitioning to work from home and being repurposed to be as productive as possible under these situations. A question, has the city checked in? Oh, so we heard in the news some discrimination against Asian restaurants. Has there been any activity like that in Ansonia, Chief? Have we checked in to make sure that there have been no threats made? Anything going on, on that level?
To date, we've had nothing that we've been made aware of. No calls have been received regarding that type of activity. We continue to monitor all of our businesses to make sure, one, there's compliance if there's any social distancing issues. But at this time, there's, there's been no report or any information that the police department has received to indicate that's occurred in Ansonia at this time.
Any other questions? We did have our Board of Aldermen President Josh Schurt, Dr. Schurt, who's with us. He had offered to perform for us some guitar work, but we don't have time for that. So I regret to tell Dr. Schurt, he'll have to wait until the next virtual town hall. Very sorry.
That's BS, John. I was ready to roll. I had a ripping solo ready for everybody, but I'll have it for next time.
That's amazing. That's great. Sorry about that.
No worries.
Time doesn't allow it. It's, there's a lot of.
I understand that this is not an emergency, so carry on.
There's a question, there's been numerous mentions of citizens being unable to reach city departments. So what's the best way, what's the best way for a resident trying to access a department that's physically closed? We put out a general number to the mayor's office and the mayor's line is the best line to call. Our intention was to allow that to serve as a hub to go off to other departments that may not physically be there. Sheila?
Yeah, you can, John, you can still call the department. They're picking up their voicemail. A lot of departments have the voicemail forwarded to their home phones or their cell phones. And some departments are still coming in to check voicemail. So you can still dial the same numbers that you had been dialing before this event.
And of course, again, a lot of our departments are getting used to this very new situation. They're trying to reposition themselves to better respond. So more and more calls are now going directly to cell phones. And again, they're finding new avenues to continue their service. And obviously, a big part of that is directly corresponding with the residents. And so if you're having any difficulty getting a hold of anyone at city hall, any department in the city, please, I think the mayor's office is the best place to call and they could patch you in by phone, by email.
And the, the mayor did say that he's there 14 hours and he really is because sometimes we'll get a text from him, you know, early morning. He's at city hall, so he will make sure either one of the department heads or he will call you back.
The mayor's given out his number. I think Sheila's number was accidentally circulated to the entire city via a,
Robo call.
So the numbers are out there.
Yep.
Now, Leslie, that may, hopefully, that's not the same hand before, but let me see.
Oh, no.
No, I put my, I ended up putting my question on the chat because I think you're, that's when you're, you're half froze. And I realized it froze. I'm good, thank you.
Any other questions through the chat? Don't want to miss anybody. And of course, if, if there are any questions after this, feel free to call the mayor's office, leave a message through Facebook, you can give us an email and we will be having additional virtual town halls. So I'm going to hand it over to Mayor Cassetti if he'd like to say any last words before we adjourn for tonight. Mayor?
Yes, yes.
Do you have any last words for us tonight?
Excellent and very informative. You can hear me, everyone? You can hear me?
They're all muted. They're all muted.
They're all muted, okay. Very good. This was very informative. I'm looking forward to the next one. We are in this together because we are Ansonia strong. We will get through this. So please do the social distancing. I don't go near anybody. I stay six feet away from everybody. I want to put a shout out to Sue Randle for making all the masks. Anybody needs masks, I have them. I want to give a shout out to Michelle Libby, who's got us our sanitizers and everything. And most of all, I want to shout out to Christina Molina, my administrative aide. She's been there every single day, working full days. And believe me, she's very busy and she, but she's there and she's loyal. So I want to thank everybody for tuning in tonight and I look forward to the next one that we're going to have in a week or so. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, residents and all the callers for the questions and participating here. And of course, thank you, thank you to our emergency responders on the absolute front lines of this. Chief Coda, Chief Eamon, Marshall Lundin, Arms, Ryan and Mike. Thank you so much for everything your departments and staff does for the city of Ansonia. Again, if there's any questions, feel free to follow up after tonight and we will see you soon. Thank you all.
Have a good night.
Good night, John.
Stay safe.
Good night, guys.